To call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. I will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. All right. Do we have action on the minutes from January 3rd, 2024? Motion to approve?
Second.
Uh. I've.
He's on fire.
Yeah, no. Um, all right. Um, any comments, questions, changes?
I won't look at you.
Everybody good? I know, I can't have you next to me. Now I'm like lost. Like so confused. So funny. All right. No comments? All right, all in favor? You ni- oh, you were, you were not here. Okay, so, um, so Phyllis, so everyone here, um, with the exception of Heather, she's abstaining. She wasn't here. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, all right, manifest documents have already started going. Um, nominations, Tom.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, have, uh, following two people to nominate, Megan Raimundo, a teacher at the Memorial School, and Susan Goslin, which will be our new nurse at the middle school. Welcome them both to the team.
I make a motion to approve?
Second. All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you. Uh, resignations.
We have two, Ellis Sofranas and Melissa Houston. Ellis, uh, Ellen is a math interventionist at the middle school and Melissa Houston teaches sixth grade science at the middle school.
I make a motion to accept with regrets.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous. Uh, superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to, uh, let everyone know that I'm very happy to say that if things continue to, um, move on the current trajectory, I'll be defending my doctoral dissertation on February 15th. So I'm very excited to finally share with everyone all the work that I've been doing on the teaching of reading at the high school level. And the research was, as many of you know, conducted with our staff. So it's really pertinent to the district and, uh, I'm really excited to, to wrap that process up and have it uh, one less thing I have to think about, but more importantly, I'm excited for the the outcome of the work and, and how well it has gone. I'm very, very proud of it and excited. So, um, theoretically, I could soon be Dr. Tom. So it's okay, you can still just call me Tom. I'm fine. Yeah, I'm totally fine with that. Uh, so thank you very much. Uh, on the, the, it just wanted to remind everyone, and I know you'll do this at the end of the meeting. The first meeting of the deliberative session is on, uh, February 7th, and there's a very important item that people need to stay aware of. Uh, when Mr. Patillo returns from his trip, he'll be working with me and probably members of the Public Relations Committee Subcommittee to talk about the teacher's contract. And the teacher's contract and teacher's negotiation went incredibly well this year. And it's important to note three things that you need to remember before you vote on the teacher's contract this year. Number one, the teacher's contract is almost completely paid for by the completion of the bond at the high school and the additional Fremont tuition. It should pose almost no increase to public taxes. The first estimate was, I think, eleven thousand dollars over two years. Uh, the second and third year. The first year is completely covered by the Fremont tuition. And the, the second point that I want everyone to remember before they vote on this important agenda item is, uh, uh, the teachers themselves were so concerned about the ability for the district to recruit and retain good teachers because of pay, that the veteran teachers put a lot of money into the first five steps in the contract, which means the new teachers who are from years one through five get more of a raise than the veteran teachers. I've never seen that in 23 years. The third item that I want people to, to really think about is that we received a tremendous uh, improvement in the contract language as a result for the funds that the board negotiated to, to support our teachers. So it really is truly, um, what Dr. Stephen Covey would call a win-win for the community, the teachers and the, and the school district. So I just want to thank everyone for taking, uh, the time to educate themselves about the teacher's contract before they vote in March, and please attend the deliberative to, to hear more information, and we will be doing a lot of, uh, a lot more uh, campaigning and putting out information about that topic, which fortunately for me as the superintendent, I'm allowed to do in my role. So I'm, I'll be coming out with all kinds of information about this topic and making sure everyone knows everything about it. Thank you very much.
All right, uh, so we move on to, um, subcommittees. Um, and before I ask for any subcommittee reports, I just want to take a minute and kind of update everyone on, uh, some things that we've been working on behind the scenes here. Um, so Tom, Micah, and I have been looking at all of the subcommittees, the time commitments, um, and seeing what we can do to streamline and still be effective in our roles. Um, so what we are looking to do is we're looking at potentially combining, combining, um, facilities and finance. Um, we're looking to, something I've been talking about for a while now is turning ISA into more full-board conversations, um, because I feel like it's really important for those conversations. When you're talking about teaching and learning, it's important for everybody on the board to be fully aware of how everything has evolved, where it started from and where it ends, um, and just being educated along the way. Um, so we're talking about starting to look at that as being done through a work session as full board. So no decisions will be made, but all of the presentations, all of the information will be brought to the full board instead. And then we can come into a board meeting and we can make decisions, we can vote on things, um, but just so everybody's fully on board and understands everything that we're talking about, um, looking at doing it that way. Um, but we're looking at modifying the schedule so that we possibly are going to talk about doing a guaranteed ma- school board meeting, uh, the first Wednesday of every month like we do, and then the third Wednesday using as either another board meeting if needed or using it as a work session to do ISA. Um, so kind of help make things move a little smoother and like I said, streamline some of the subcommittees. Um, there are some that are required by law. We cannot change them. We cannot modify them. Um, so we will keep those as is. Um, so we're gonna also, as we work through this process, um, we're going to, um, have to change some of our policies once we make some decisions on how we want to move this forward, um, and make it so that it's just, it's a, it's a very long day for everybody, you know, four o'clock until 10 o'clock at night or whatever it may be, you know, it's, it's, it's very long. It's a huge commitment and um, we just feel like there are ways to streamline and make things more effective, um, and efficient. So we're gonna work on, we're gonna work on that. That's our, our next task. So I just wanted to kind of update everybody. So anybody that's, anybody that's thinking about potentially running for the board, um, we're working on ways to streamline and make it so that the nights are a little less long, um, and we're more efficient in our jobs.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, now do I have any subcommittee reports? Don't all speak at once. No? All right, I have. I do have an ISA. Calling out my minutes. Give you a quick overview. Okay, so excellence in student achievement met on December 13th, um, which feels like forever ago. Um, so what happened that meeting is Christine Mister Rosier brought to us, um, UBD, uh, which is Understanding by Design. Um, and she talked about a schedule, um, for the process of approving the curriculum units. Um, our staff has been working for two years on writing this curriculum and making it so that we can publish it on our website so that everyone understands what the students are learning, when they're learning it. Um, and it's also easy. It's, it's easier for new staff that come in to understand when they're coming in, okay, how do I stay on task or on par with my other teacher? Very clearly lined up, you know, how it will be the timeline, not exactly how it will be taught, because we still want teachers to be able to have that, you know, little bit of personality in there. Um, we don't want to take that away, but making sure that there's consistency, um, so that the curriculum is aligned vertically and horizontally. So we talked about that timeline. Um, tonight we met again and actually we went through, um, high school math. Um, and there were 10 different sections of math and we looked at all of them and our teachers are rock stars because those UBDs are phenomenal. They are stellar. So super, super, super happy and proud and excited and just, um, all the work, you can tell that they have put so much time and effort into it and it's greatly appreciated. Um, so that was great. Um, we talked about on the 13th, we talked about distance learning snow days. Um, there were lots of reasons maybe not to look at it any further right now. Um, so if you want to learn more, you can go watch the meeting or read the minutes, but um, right now, we're not gonna continue to talk about the distance learning. Snow day, blizzard, bag days right now. Um, that was really it. Um, but tonight's meeting was more exciting, where we actually got to look at UBD and start thinking about all of that, and it's very exciting. So I'll have an update on that, um, hopefully at the next meeting. Um, okay, uh, and no other subcommittee reports? All right. Uh, Rebecca, student council report.
Um, career speakers for the month of January are following a law enforcement theme. The US Marshal Kingston Police Department and the New Hampshire Police Department and the Rocking County Sheriff Department are all having officers come to give talks to the students. Students from Ms. Harvey's Honors Your Government and Money were able to take part in a live stream called Civics and Civility hosted by the National Sen- Center for Competency-Based Learning. This is helping reinforce more of what they've learned about the government and prepare them for the citizenship test, which is a graduation requirement for New Hampshire. The high school ski club, after months of meeting and fundraising, had their first outing to Pat Peaks, where all 26 members spent four hours skiing. And they all had a great time. They're really excited for their next outing. The junior class is selling raffle tickets for a fundraiser. They're selling two tickets to the Bruins game February the 15th. And the first elective zoology course, which is taught by Mrs. Trudeau, is coming to an end next week. It was very successful. They had a chance to complete some dissections and learn about animal identification and classification, and she's hoping, um, next ti- next time they run the class to do more outdoor work. Very excited that that went well.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. First public comment? And everybody's jumping up. All right, let's get to the really fun stuff.
We have the students go first for the.
That's, that's what it is right here. That's why I said the fun stuff. We're getting to the fun stuff. All right, so field trip. Lake George, New York.
Oh, I think so, right here. Creation. Um, I don't think so, maybe.
No, mine does.
Okay, thank you. This one just in there. My Chromebook's blank.
They drop on the screen?
Yeah. I don't think this will. No.
Jeez.
Can't put that.
It'll connect, Anna.
Thank you.
So, Anna, you should have an A1. Oh, there we go. I made it stay. I just had the cord. Adapter. Or.
Yeah.
Sorry. Technology. And people with masks. Man, it's something I can do if I have to. And I'm gonna try and go. Right by you. So sorry. I'm trying this projector on. It'll just take a minute. See that? Is there a light switch right near you? It helps. All right, it just takes a minute. Sorry, I don't know why the. It went on? Okay.
Yeah, don't hit the button again. It'll slow us down even more.
Well, no, because there's on and off. If I keep hitting on.
It doesn't know.
Here we go. Know why it's not?
Where did everything go? Why? I don't know where my bar went. That's not on my computer. I don't. Because that's PDFs that I don't want to open. And I had this in Google and I don't.
All right, do you want, ask Dawn if she wants to do something else, and I can go grab my laptop for them.
Or what if we try to unplug this?
Yeah, try that. Try unplugging. Sorry, hold on. We might have it. No. They're having trouble. She asked if there was some.
No biting words. Um, Matt said it's because you're using a Mac. I said.
I love. Matt. I don't know what else to say. If not, we could always do the, um, donation.
Yeah. Okay. Do you guys need a couple of minutes? We can keep rolling with.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go grab my laptop. Okay, yeah.
No problem at all, guys.
All right. Um, so if no one is opposed, um, we could skip down to 7.4. For the high school $500 New Hampshire environmental.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks, Matt.
Put on my mic. All right, so, um, Megan Petruzy received a $500 grant for her sustainability club. And it, and they are saying that it's to foster their environmental literacy. I believe it's going to be used for the, um, grow your food and sustainable, sustainable re- um, garden projects. So we have like, uh, like a standing garden.
Our gardens. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
Great. All right. Um, so you need a motion to accept?
Yes, I do.
The $500 donation.
I make a motion to accept the $500 donation from New Hampshire Environmental Educators.
Second.
Warmer, with warm thanks. Second with warm thanks.
Uh, any discussion?
Other than a huge thank you, um, because I know everybody really seems to like the, the tower gardens. They're really cool. It's neat to walk into cafeteria, you can hear the water, um, and it's really cool to see the food growing there.
And cafe services uses.
And they do, which is really, that's even better. Um, I love that. So huge thank you. Um,
Great.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor? All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I think we're waiting for Jen to come back.
Do the policies if you want to. Yeah, the DFA policy is easy.
Oh, yeah, we could do DFA, right?
Okay, so, um, the DFA policy is the investment policy. Basically, it authorizes the, uh, well, it, it directs the school board, I'm sorry, school district treasurer to invest the funds into, um, into a certain, let's see, three objectives of investments. Basically, we can only invest it in cash, okay? But this is a standard, um, policy that we have to approve, and we really should be approving it on an annual basis. Um, and it makes the auditors happy, okay? This is not a change in the policy. I agree with the.
It's a reaffirmation of.
This is a reaffirmation, and it complies with the accounting pronouncements that our, um, our audit can continue to have like a clean opinion. Okay?
And this is what we just followed also when we just, we had that conversation with, um, President Eze about, you know, investing and all of that. We followed this.
Um, this is more strict than, because they can invest.
They can invest in anything, but we followed kind of along the lines of what this policy states is.
Yes.
Uses our guidelines.
Exactly, yes.
Make that recommendation to them.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yep. So this is something that we've pretty much been using and following all along, and we just need to reaffirm it, just.
Yep. So I'm looking for a motion to reaffirm.
Make a motion to reaffirm? Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
I'll, I'll take the next one. Um, IKE.
Yeah, you want to move to policy IKE?
Sure. Um, so the basic gist of this policy is it outlines the the most important point for everyone to remember is that it tells us the date by which parents need to be notified if a student is going to be retained, and it changes that date from, uh, April 30th to February 1st. So this affects mostly the younger grades. So we want this done tonight, first and second read, so the principals can get working on that process for the, because February 1st is a couple of weeks away.
Yeah, and originally, um, the original language did talk about, um, having it earlier and then, um, kind of got moved to April, and then when we talked about it as a subcommittee, um, along with Christine, we agreed that February 1st is really the date. Um, and it's not to say your kid is going to be held back. It's to say there are concerns that your child might be held back.
Thank you for clarifying.
This is where they're struggling. This is where we need to get them to so that they don't get held back. So it gives the student and the parents and the teachers and the staff members plenty of time to work collaboratively to try and keep the kid from being held back. Um, so it's just, we thought that February 1st date was really important to make sure there's plenty of time so that if we don't have to hold a student back, we don't.
Because April, we had talked in the, I agree, we talked in the policy meeting, April 30th is just way too late.
Way too late to have that conversation.
Too stressful for parents, for kids themselves. So if we can have that early enough, we can put some plans in action to get them to where they need to.
That was my question tomorrow. Is that early enough? I guess, is that sort of my second check?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And we, we talked to Christine about like what makes sense, and she said February 1st made sense. Um, so that was, yeah, because we were all on the same page is, is, you know, it needs to be early enough.
Because we'll have either two quarters or trimester, you know, because each school is a little bit different, but it gives enough time to have enough data points and enough grades to be able to kind of have those conversations with, uh, students and their parents. I make a motion to approve?
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
I think Jen's ready.
Oh, you ready? All right.
Okay, the lights.
Start again.
Perfect. Over.
Are we all good?
You want to hit the over button?
Okay. Hello, um, my name is Tori Gibson. I'm the class president, um, of the senior class council.
My name is Tessa Donigan. I am the secretary of the senior class council.
Hi, I'm Sydney O'Toole, and I'm a class rep.
I'm Caitlin Bobstein, and I'm the honorary member.
I'm Anna Tomato, and I'm just a member.
Not just.
I'm Rebecca Trudeau, and I'm school board representative.
I'm Gwen Libby, and I'm class vice president.
Um, thank you for letting us present our senior trip proposal. We're all very excited tonight to be here and show you what we've been working on and what we've been planning, um, this whole year.
Thank you. Uh, we are hoping to have our trip Monday, June 3rd to Tuesday, June 4th, um, to take place in Lake George, New York. And we are planning our trip with Adventure Student Travel. They were the people to help plan the New York trip for the seniors last year. And they really did a great job. Um, they've been very easy to communicate with, getting back within minutes to my emails. Um, they're very reliable. Um, they've been really helpful through this whole process. Sorry. All right, so to get into our itinerary, we will leave Monday, June 3rd at 7:00 AM, and it'll take about four hours to arrive in Lake George, New York. We will then eat lunch, which is included in the final price, and then we will go to the Adirondack Extreme Adventure Course. And at 4:00 PM, we will tech, check into the hotel, and then we will, we will have dinner at the Lake George Steamboat. That cost is also included in the final cost. And then at 9:30 PM, we will depart for the hotel.
Okay, and then for the second day, um, we are gonna have breakfast at the hotel, and then we're also gonna have the hotel checkout. So at 7:00 AM, bright and early, we are gonna depart from the hotel. And for the rest of the day, we are going to have free time at Lake George, lunches included, and for the free time, it includes lake time, shopping, and more. And everyone is required to be in the same place for departure, which is at 5:00 PM. And we will get back to the high school around 10:30.
Okay, so the important stuff, the pricing, right? Um, right now, we're thinking about 70 students, um, will go, but that is subject to change. With 70 students going, we were thinking about 10 students a chaperone, so with 70 students, seven chaperones, which again, subject to change depending on how many people actually want to go. Um, right now, with a quad, we're estimating it's about $600, and then, uh, that's room size, so it'd be four to a room with a triple 630 and a double 677. So as the rooms decrease in the amount of people being able to stay, it gets more expensive. So we're kind of leaning towards that cheaper quad room. Um, and yeah, so that's kind of the pricing.
Uh, for fundraising so far, we're hoping to get the price down to only 300 a person. Um, so far, we've hosted homecoming and also in the Community Oven Monday fundraiser. We're hoping to do winter formal February 17th, as well as winter carnival t-shirts, the Valentine's Day grams, and more.
Next, we have what is included with the trip. For this trip, all gratuities are included, along with admission fees and meals. After that, we have our one-night hotel accommodations, whether it's a quad, a triple, a double, whatever that may be. Um, after we have the round-trip motor coach with driver room and gratuity. And lastly is the individual payment plan.
So, things that aren't included is additional night security guards. Of course, there'll be the chaperones. And also you have to bring your own money for the shopping during the free time and any purchases you want to make at rest stops on the way there and the way back.
So like I was talking about before, for our rooming plan, we kind of want to do four to a room to keep it as cheap as possible, um, for the students. Um, we want to do like a Google form survey, so people are put in rooms with, obviously, separate, um, sexes, but we want to put them with people that they're gonna like sleeping with, you know, we're not gonna try to put people who are gonna argue in a room. Um, and then our advisors are going to, you know, approve everything, make sure it checks. Um, and again, estimated one chaperone per 10 students, which we said was three rooms? Would work out to three rooms for the chaperones. And then, again, the final number depends on the final number of students. So we're thinking about five to 10, depending on how many students go. Um, and then three rooms per chaperone kind of as mentioned before.
Um, and as always, on field trips, we ta- we try to represent Sanborn well and really be, um, the best students we can. So we'll all be following what is mentioned in the student handbook, uh, with exceptions to the phone policy and attendance. So students are still, um, expected to be respectful and courteous in their actions. Um, and chaperones are able to, um, you know, give, um, have reasonable requests for these students and really just make sure everything is in order, but students and our grade is pretty well behaved, um, I would say. But, um, just making sure that our students are upholding what Sanborn really wants to show, and we really are excited to, um, represent Sanborn on our trip, um, if it gets approved. Um, you can go to the next slide. It just says thank you. Um, we've been really working hard on planning this trip. We've gone through a few different options, but we really wanted to make something memorable. Um, this trip, um, going to Lake George is kind of a different destination that you would go for, um, on a senior trip. But like the steamboat and the adventure. But like the steamboat and the adventure course, it's really something that you wouldn't do on a normal trip with your family. So it's gonna be something that um, everyone will remember and something that will really take with us when we leave Sanborn at our graduation. So thank you for considering this. Um, any questions, comments um, on our trip?
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have any questions?
Like a comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to commend you on doing your homework when you read the policy. I mean, for you guys to actually go through and be like, hey, this one doesn't apply of a cell phone, like. That means you guys actually really looked at it, so. That was impressive.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. So the trip looks fantastic. Uh, looks like a lot of fun. Uh, looks like the chaperones are also gonna have some fun. Uh, my only question on it was uh, the night security guard option. What, what's, what's that all about?
So um, they included it in our um itinerary. They had a section on what's not included. They um, when we first got in contact with Adventure Student Travel, they asked if we wanted a night security guard. Um, I think that would be like a local police officer. They didn't have one in our last, in the last senior trip, so I mean, we have our show, they did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
They did um.
Thought so.
But that was in New York City. So yeah, we, and, yep, and I think last year it was a hundred and fifty dollar. Um, it might have been more. I can check with Mr. Kelly. He'd have the information still. Um, and they're just uh, security people, so they weren't armed officers. They're just people hired to do night security and make sure everyone stays where they're supposed to be.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you. Trip looks fun.
Good job.
Thank you. Great job. Great presentation.
Make a motion to approve the Lake George senior trip.
Great. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Great.
Thank you.
Congratulations guys.
All right.
Overnight field trip.
Yep. Ms. Missionsen, while you are here, would you like to go and do the Allstate Jazz Festival?
So I believe, um, oh.
Can I just tell this, oh, um, students, you, you don't have to stay. I just don't want you to feel like. Walking out and I know you all have a lot to do and we appreciate that you're being polite, but please enjoy.
You don't have to stay, but if you go, we can always go strip down.
We would not make that vote where you vote. Have fun guys.
Guys, great job.
All right.
I know Rebecca's here. She's.
Saying to support Rebecca. Okay, um, so I believe Mr. Harrington sent over some information on this overnight trip. Um, it was one that the um, same student, uh, um. Sorry, went on last year and it is the NHMEA Jazz Allstate Festival. So um, a Sanborn student, uh sophomore, River DPO, she had, um, they had to try out for the. Position in the Jazz Allstate and they had to audition. So they made the group. So now this is sort of the concert performance. The students arrive, they spend all day rehearsing, they have a concert. Um, and then they have a concert the next day, so it's a two night thing. Um, Mr. Harrington would be. Also attending and it's a local venue this year, so it's right at Pinkerton Academy, but they still require that. Students and everyone involved stay over. Um, so some of the details on that, it's at Pinkerton Academy on February eighth through the tenth. Um, the hotel is the Executive Court Best Western, which is right off the highway there, exit five, the Londonderry Manchester Line. Uh, the student River will be staying in a room with other students from other schools who are attending and it's students that River knew from last year. Um, and who's sort of friendly within the music chorus. Network, so um, they're really comfortable and, and fine with that choice. Um, the student will have their own transportation. So parents have to transport the students to this event. Um, it's not something that typically buses have to have go to. It's usually parent drop off or some sort of parent sign in registration. So um, that is the transportation. Does anyone have any questions?
I guess I want to say congratulations to River for being accepted. That's fantastic.
Yeah, yep, it's a really nice honor for River, so I know that they've worked really hard.
Congratulations to River and I make a motion to accept.
Accept or approve?
Either.
Approve.
Approve.
Make a motion to approve. Still second. All right, um, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous.
Right. Thank you. And you'll probably see me back soon for the band version of uh, the Allstate trip, so.
All right.
On the lookout.
Okay, um, oh, and Jen, you're not done. Uh, the diploma with distinction, you're just on fire tonight, like, you, you're just.
Well, it was nice. It was all in the same night. Um, so. Speaking of, and I really liked on what you recommended for ISA personally, not that it matters, but. Um, because this is an example of something that did go through ISA that is pretty significant. Um, and it's. Important, I think, that everyone sort of understands the history, where it came from. So I had Phyllis um. Upload the diploma with distinction document into your files. And the front page, um, before you get to recommendations, I always like to give people sort of a background who was on the committee. What our norms were, um, what our goal was. So this group got together to establish. Uh, what this diploma with distinction is going to have to look like. Because it, it's changing, which we'll talk about in a minute, if you kind of look through the history of it. Um, we held three one and a half hour meetings over the course of five weeks and. Then you can see our recommendations that we came up with, but we talked about a lot of different topics. Um, and at the end tonight, I'd like to kind of pull us back to a topic that I'd love to see moving forward. Um, but we talked about overall graduation requirements, New Hampshire scholars, uh, defensive learning, GPA, unweighted versus weighted. Diploma pathways and honor roll. And so what we decided made the most sense at this junction and where we're at in this moment. Um, because after the class of twenty twenty-four, it becomes really difficult to offer a diploma with distinction as it's currently defined. Um, so we recommended that there no longer be a diploma with distinction after the class of twenty twenty-four. Um, but instead just keep the current graduation titles that we also have. And recognitions, um, which would be, you know, the valedictorian, the salutatorian, the essayist. Um, and also summa cum laude, magna cum laude and cum laude. So those we currently do have all of that. So we're really recommending that that's what we stick to. Um, students on track to be the summa cum laude are, are those who are invited to our honors recognition um, dinner. And just to also give you another little plug, um, we looked at local schools around our area. And none of them have a diploma with distinction. So they have the honor roll system, they have the special mark, you know, special um, graduation type titles. Um, but they really have, we, we couldn't really find many other schools around that had anything. Like this. Um, if you look, our justification really is, um, you know, we changed. Our schedule and our credit requirements from uh, twenty-eight to twenty-four. And only offered six period, six credits per year that students could take here at school. We know there are other options. We know that there are V-Lax courses and other things that students could do. Um, but not everyone truly can access those opportunities. It's not, you know, something. Like coming to school, everyone has access to come to school every day and to take their classes here. So it really limited the ability for students to sort of go above and beyond, which was the basis for the way the diploma with distinction had been done in the past. So for example, in an eight period structure. Um, students only needed twenty-eight credits to graduate, but could take up to thirty-two credits worth of classes. So then one of the requirements for earning that diploma with distinction was say, earning at least thirty credits, which could be done. But now, um, kids who are currently freshmen and sophomores won't have that. They will need. Every single period, every single year, every single class. They will need all those credits and the only way they would really be able to go above and beyond. Is like I said, through V-Lax. So could it be done? Yes, but it's not. Again, it's not necessarily something that we know all students can access all the time. Or that it's healthy for, or that it's a, a positive experience. It is for some, but it's not for everyone, right? Um. The other suggestion of a change that we would like to see was to the honor roll structure. And really, it's just what we're calling the honor roll, so it's not taking it away. Um, but as a committee, we talked a lot about why we're calling it different things when it really means the same. So for example, if you look at what used to be known as honors with distinction, well, it's the same as summa cum laude. Why would we not just call it that? Why would we give it a different name and create more semantics and confusion? So. Um, especially if we were going to take the diploma with distinction away, uh, it made sense to us to call high honor roll. Summa cum laude. Um. And same with the magna cum laude and the cum laude. So for example, when we do our ceremonies in September for the honors recognition night. These would be the titles we would give students when they come across the stage, instead of honors, high honors, and when we would read the names. And again, our justification here was really just to keep the language consistent. Um, it didn't make sense to have like the same thing called something completely different. And then we did think about the alternative would be, you know, if we wanted to consider adding a seventh period. Then maybe we could explore the idea of the diploma with distinction. Um, if there was again, that additional opportunity. So, um, and the last thing that I wanted to just sort of. Put a plug in for is I would love to see this committee, um. Which we would need to, uh, Jamie Fitzpatrick was part of this committee, so we would have to uh, have a replacement, uh, as, as many people who would want on the board. I really love to move in a direction of talking about diploma pathways instead of like a diploma with distinction. So I would really love to think about um, having those types of titles attached to diplomas. Um, or indicated or making sure that we're recognizing when kids are earning the industry credentials. Maybe they're getting a technical diploma. A scholastic diploma if they've gone above and beyond with AP offerings. So. I would like to see this work sort of continue, but maybe in that direction.
Yeah, and as um, a member of this committee that um, worked on this, I can tell you that. There's lots of great conversation that happened. Um. And really what it boiled down to was. You can't get that distinction now by having the extra classes. And I'm pretty sure it used to be thirty-two. You had to have thirty-two credits. As opposed to twenty-eight. So you had to take a class and pass it and get the credit for every single class, every single period, every single year. But the way it was set up before, it was, there really wasn't truly distinction. It was the criteria that you had to meet. Um, perfect example, my daughter and my nephew, same graduating class. My nephew applied himself from day one, honors, AP, you know, all of that. Um, got diploma with distinction. My daughter didn't really find her way and dig in until her junior year. Didn't take the honors, didn't take the AP, still got a diploma with distinction because she met certain requirements. But they weren't the same requirements. They really didn't match. And there were so many kids that were getting a diploma with distinction, it really didn't make a distinction anymore. You know, so there was a lot of conversation around that and what does distinction really mean? How do we recognize these students for going above and beyond in different areas? And so. I really love the idea that you were talking about, about different pathways for the diplomas. That was something that I really was passionate about, was like, okay, well. Can we give them a, you know, diploma with, you know, distinction, but not, maybe not distinction, but like for the trades. Or for academics or for this, or for wherever they really pushed and went above and beyond to recognize them for all of the extra work they put in. Um, so for now, what we were talking about was when they go and they do their class day. Making sure that everyone is recognized at class day for all the things they did that put them above and beyond. So they're recognized. We want to make sure our students are recognized for all the hard work they put in. So for now, um, you know, sticking with the sum cum laude, cum laude. You know, all of that, um, but really recognizing all of the students um, at the class day and really making it a big. A big deal at class day, uh, until we kind of figure out maybe another pathway, but the twenty-four credits kind of was. Making it a little challenging and there was lots of discussion and I think more discussion needs to be had. We didn't have time to really. Go so deep into figuring out, you know, extra, extra titles for diplomas and how you line that up. There's a lot of work that goes into it and. Things have to be done so that students know when they're, you know, freshmen, what the requirements are, so they can start planning out. How, if they're gonna go for these different, you know, um, diploma pathways. Um, so we tried to focus on this for now. Um, and then the other thing. Was, I think I was the pain in the butt that said, let's change the honors with distinction and make it match. Um, because my biggest thing as a parent is. Don't tell me my kid is honors with distinction, but then tell me they're not getting a diploma with distinction. You know what I mean? It's, it's that consistency of language, um, because there were so many things that. Made or didn't make it so that you got that diploma with distinction. It was like, but. If you're getting sum cum laude recognition consistently, you're gonna graduate sum cum laude. You know, there's no other. There's, there aren't six other things that make it so that you do or don't get it. You know what I mean? So it, it just is to really keep things consistent, keep it um, so that it's. Students, students and parents know where their kids are at. It, it's just that consistency piece was really important to me and. It was nice because everybody else seemed to feel the same as well. So, um, that's why we decided to try and kind of just switch to. What you end up getting when you graduate, what your title is at graduation is what we were thinking about switching to. Um, for every year when you're talking about honor roll, so.
And just to um, circle back, there is still the diploma with distinction for the class of twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Yeah, so this would be, yeah.
This would be future.
Yep. So this, we would, what we're proposing now would start after this year. And give us again, some time where we can get together and then talk about, you know, different pathway options.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Um, any further discussion, questions?
No, thank you for your work on this.
You're welcome.
So the, um, this is the first I'm seeing the breakdown here, so trying to walk through this. So thank you, uh, Jen for that and thank you, Dawn, for the additional information. So my only question, so initially when you said that we were gonna get rid of the diploma with distinction. I cringe at that, right? Cause it, it sounds like we're getting rid of an opportunity for those who choose to show academic excellence. It seems like we're getting rid of that. But then you clarified and you said, well, maybe it's actually not that. Because of the criteria. So when we say diploma with distinction, um, it's. You know, the devil's in the detail, so the semantics there are, well, maybe it's not that, right? So we're not actually getting rid of an opportunity for those that choose academic excellence.
Correct.
Because I want to be clear, like, we, we should not be fostering an environment where everybody is going to achieve the highest. Because then it waters down what any sort of excellence means, right?
That's.
And we choose excellence in different areas. Some people are in automotive, some people are in woodworking, some people are in academics. And if that's what people choose to, then we should honor that and give them a path to honor that.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
Right. So imagine a student graduating summa cum laude with a technical diploma because they took advantage of everything we had here.
Okay.
Plus SST, but, right? Yeah. Um, and I'm happy to share to the New Hampshire scholars. So right now you'll see for the class of twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. What the requirements for the diploma with distinction are. And when we looked into the New Hampshire Scholars Program. And schools have the autonomy to make changes to that as they see fit. Um, but right now we just stick with the New Hampshire Scholars kind of minimum standards and it's pretty minimum.
It's very minimum.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that was one of the things that would put you into a diploma with distinction, but. It didn't necessarily mean that you were that. But it didn't necessarily mean that you were that distinct student.
Got it.
So that was really where this conversation all came.
Okay, thank you.
Because we do want students to push themselves and apply themselves in whatever way is the right path for them. But we also want to make sure that we're really acknowledging students for the hard work they've truly put in and not just recognizing everybody because they met certain criteria.
Right. Okay.
And the New Hampshire Scholars will still be an option. That's always an option for graduates, so.
Thank you both.
Welcome.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think I'm done now.
I think.
Thanks, Jen.
And I think we're almost done.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Alright, actually, so we do not need to review the warrant articles again. The reason warrant articles was on here was because we were going to revote to try and we had a 6-0 vote because unfortunately Heather was not able to attend last meeting, but tonight we don't have MICA, so it would still be a 6-0 vote. So it doesn't make sense to revisit to end up with the same vote that we already have. So we will push that off and, fingers crossed, at the meeting we have on the 7th, right before the annual district meeting, the deliberative session, we'll be able to get, fingers crossed, a vote of 7-0 because everybody will be able to vote.
It's not going to be able to be there.
Oh, no. Alright, so it's going to be 6-0. And we're done. It's all, it's done. We're good. Leave it. Alright. Thank you.
I don't know, have to.
We'll ask, we'll figure, we'll figure out all the details on it. Don't worry about it.
Get you there.
Okay, so second public comment.
I just want to follow the law though, like.
Right.
Vote on it.
Right, we'll find out. We'll ask the question. Yep. Okay, so there's no public here, so I'm assuming there's no public comment. Okay, next, next meeting agenda. We are going to have a one-hour pre-deliberative meeting, 6:00 PM here, Wednesday, February 27th. And then the first voting session of the annual district meeting, the deliberative session, will be held on Wednesday, February 7th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at the high school. And then the filing period for positions on the Sanborn Regional School Board, Sanborn Regional Budget Committee, and the district moderator will open on Wednesday, January 24th, 24, and end on Friday, February 2nd, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Candidate filing forms may be obtained at the SAU office from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, located at the Christie Building at 51 Church Street in Kingston. A school district clerk will be available on the last day to file until 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Phyllis.
And if someone would like to take us into non-public?
Before we do that, can we just, also just wanted to make sure the public knows we are not having a school board meeting or subcommittees on February 14th.
Yes.
So there's no meeting on February 14th.
There will be no meeting February 14th. Why? I don't know. I think our families are significantly.
We've met our quota for this.
Would appreciate seeing us on Valentine's Day and we. You're not going to be there.
Want to show up and hang out?
No, and we looked at what needs to get done and we feel like we can, we can nix that meeting without impacting any, any board business. So, yes. Okay, now somebody can call us into.
And I make a motion to call since a non-public for RSA 91-A003-Roman numeral 2 BCK. Do I have a second? Great. Alright, roll call in. Heather?
Yes.
Ken? Rick? Jeremiah?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Alright, we're in non-public.